Whenever you're ready.
Right, follow me to the order. There's a lot of our business. We Apple, who were raffle, but all friends at the library. And make the motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
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 You know those paintings.
For reality, but we need to make sure it's been correct.
Yeah.
You getting the tickets out today?
As soon as, as soon as Rick sends me the template, I fill out if you haven't been permed and cut them up, I'll have them. So, yeah, I'll have them today.
When's the, you gonna draw it on the sixteen?
Yeah.
Sales are going through the sixteen.
Uh, they'll go through the sixteenth and we'll draw it on the sixteen.
Can you buy one, do you buy?
And the thing will be on the ticket, the wife is a Saturday, sixteen's a Saturday. My results over nine to noon, it'll be drawn at the noon.
Yeah.
That'll be on the ticket.
I'll buy one right now.
We have them right now.
Yeah, but they'll get it to us.
I won't, I won't see the ticket.
In here, I'm honest.
I figure.
Yeah. I'll catch you tomorrow.
Really trust for you here.
Uh, hey Jason, what have you learned?
Uh. What have I learned? Uh. I don't know. What I've learned that I really know, I've had conversations with a party that's been interested. Starting in July because that party called Susan. And she referred him to me, she thought he had more questions about the history and the neighborhood and everything. Um. It's that, I think I talked to him four times. It's only in the last conversation or two that we've understood that it's a partner and same party with the person that Chris has met and spoken with. And so they uh, have also been speaking with the former owner. I have no idea what what if anything's been said there or what the level of potential agreement they've come to, but they I think they're at a point where they're gonna decide whether to move to next steps or not. And part of that is that they haven't been in and they want to have a walkthrough if possible to then decide what the next steps are. So that's probably all I know. The types, I mean, the conversation is mostly them asking me questions.
Yeah.
If you can believe it, I'm not asking questions. And just let that.
But has Susan learned anything from the southern, say, people?
Uh, Susan has, yeah, I've talked to Andrew quite a bit and she's talked to Jennifer as the executive director. She spoke last night. Uh, I think that was more about preservation easement. Uh, device and a few things, there's a couple of other towns that have had similar situations that they've helped. But there's, there's some connection that could be available there if it's helpful. So Susan has more about what she might ask you to engage in. She's done some some work on that.
So has anybody, I know Chris met one guy trying to go into the building and that, is that been stopped?
Well, that's the same guy.
This is the same guy.
So as it turns out, there are two, if I may.
Two partners or whatever.
They're partners, so I met the, the, uh, the nail banger.
Yes.
And he's been speaking with the, the financial and business, more business side there. We didn't know that it was same, same.
Right, so like you, I don't know if you knew there was another partner. I, I knew there was, but I didn't say, well, who is it? What if, so.
We've.
Well, I'd make your point, but basically they don't, they don't allow it in the building.
Yes, they.
Yeah, they know they're, because I saw him go in the building.
Okay.
But then another, cause I talked to Steve.
Right.
And, but Steve isn't the gentleman that's been reaching out to them.
Definitely.
So it's like, oh, are there multiple groups that are interested in this property that are reaching out that have started a dialogue with the former owner of, you know, let's make a deal and well, as it turns out, it's the same group, um, just two different heads. So, and now they are, they are well aware that they can't go in, um. And they haven't tried and now we're asking for permission from that's purpose of one of us will have to accompany. If we, yeah, this side. Because I mean, I have taken the position like I did with Jason the other day and I said.
Also to add, these people have reached out to me as well. Um, to ask about a walk through, I did respond to them and say, I wouldn't really have more information because we're having a work session today. But, um, they also reached out to me as well to see about a walk through.
I think one or two of us will have to be available to walk through the building with them, just from a safety point, there's some issues in here.
Were they the only ones or do you have other people?
I've had a few, um, people reach out with interest in regards to the property. Um, not like to have a walk through, um, but I have had one gentleman who came in and asked about it, um. And I've had a few others here and there. Um, but there was one gentleman from, I wanna say his name, or he was from Maine. Um, and he was extremely interested in it. So that, I think other than that, um, the only other one I had interested in it was the gentleman who was working with a former owner.
Same name, it's Steven.
Mike.
Like, right. And then Preservation Alliance has had a few calls that they notified us about and I think those people may or may not ask questions and then same thing, we tell them to reach out to you if they have a town question.
So Susan, Jason says you've learned a lot.
But you knew a lot to start with.
I don't think that's exactly.
Well, I kind of, uh, I've kind of organized my thoughts, let's put it that way. Yeah, I mean, uh, we are gonna be, because of that listing, we are gonna be getting these kind of calls and inquiries and should probably figure out, okay, how do we respond to that? What do we do? And it seems like there's three uh, ways to go, it's like if if the town, uh, if, if the former owner wants to buy back, that's one option. And who knows what he does with it after that, would be, you know, this Mike and Steve group or whatever. Another option seems to be, um, these other inquiries. And we never hear from the former owner, he never gets his act together, but we have these other inquiries. Uh, is the town gonna wanna respond to those and um, make the property available to sell to them? Uh, and then a third option is what we kind of talked about last time is, does the town wanna retain it? And under each of those scenarios, you know, there are different things that have to happen under the RSAs, um, like if the town wants to retain it, there has to be a town meeting vote to do that. Um. And if, if we retain it, what, what for, you know, the municipal complex kind of thing, that type of thing. Um, if the easiest, I guess, is the former owner walks in and have the money and for the way it's done. Um. And then the middle one would be these other inquiries and you know, do we decide, okay, it's time to sell it? And how do you do that? Do you just, like we've done in the past, have Steve Schofield do an auction? Or do you sort of put out a request for proposals from these people? What, what are you offering? What do you wanna do with it? Um, here's what we would like, we would like it to, whatever is done with it to comply with our local regulations. Um, you know, and that the historic integrity of the building be maintained. And so you could get those proposals in and decide which one's the best offer, whether it's the most money being offered or, um, the best outcome. Um, or sort of solid proposal that might actually work. I mean, a lot of people have good ideas, but can never get it off the ground.
That was a matter of a couple years.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So I think there are different ways to go about it and um, I think it's would be, uh, important sooner rather than later to put those questions to the town attorney and get an answer, okay, if you do this, these are the things you have to do. Um, you know, the former owner has right of repurchase for a certain period of time. How do you deal with that? Uh, you know, all those things, we've gotta line all that up. And as these offers and possibilities come in, then you know which path to take. Um, so you're doing everything above board and right way and everybody's on, on board with it.
Um, the way it was explained to me, the previous owner has to notify us by certified mail that they're interested.
Yeah.
And so far that has not happened.
Right.
So we're just going on hearsay, it's.
Right.
When you said you would, as far as you know, you were told by who, uh, that was, uh, payment.
Yes.
Eighty, eighty-nine, I think you got the exact number, but.
Right, but so, but he's got, you know, former owner has that right of repurchase for that three-year period. The town could do nothing and any time during that three period, three-year period, he could come in and say, okay, I'm ready to buy back. Or during that three-year period, the town could say, we've got all these great offers. This sounds really good to us, we want to sell it and get it back on the rolls before that three-year period. We're going to go forward with that and that's where the statute says ninety days before you
do that.
Do that, you notify the former owner. Within thirty days, he has to say, I intend to buy back. And it's all the certified mail. And then within another thirty days, he has to actually show up with the money. And if you can't do that, then you go ahead with whatever sale you were contemplating. That's how I read the statute. Um, now there's a letter out to him already. I personally don't think it, it commits the town to anything. But I think that's a question that um, the town attorney, or you know, that should, there should be a legal reply to them. Um, just so you know.
When we, when that was brought up before, I hadn't never seen the letter.
Right.
And I've since seen the letter and now understand that it doesn't have any of the board of members, board member signature.
Right.
It came from one individual.
Right.
I think that that might change the, the weight of that letter as well over here.
That's possible.
That's definitely. I don't know, I can't read any movement or anything. That was one. Yeah, so I mean, I don't, I, I, I personally don't think that there's, there's a lot less weight because it's not signed to the board members. And at that time, January fourth, that would have been you two and Vicki.
And I think you'd have to look at the minutes and see whether the board authorized that letter or, you know.
In, in hindsight, we had the discussion on it, we never looked at the physical letter itself, I could just send it out. So the student issue, I'm thinking, we need to make sure counsel has basically looked at that and said, yep, from a town standpoint, there's nothing there, we don't have to worry about it. Because I hate for him to come in wheelchair in front of the judges we have in this county or jury. Because things tend to lean back toward the individual. And I, and we need to be clear what our movement path is.
I think he was hypothetically.
Yeah, making it thematic.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that letter was just that we agreed to wait, I don't think.
Yep. But I don't, from what, from what Susan, the research Susan's done, I'm not sure if it can be interpreted by somebody else, there's more to that, the way it's worded.
Yeah.
And that's where I, I'm coming to agree with Susan, council just needs to look at it and say, there's nothing here, don't worry about it. From that standpoint and then follow the rest of the statute if he decides he wants to.
Right, because when we found out he had a buyer for it, he was gonna pay the taxes, we said, well, we'll take the penalty. So that you acted up to thirty-seven thousand.
And what if you could say, does he know that?
Uh, or is this the last thing he's had?
That's probably the last thing he had, so he's.
Yeah.
He has another event.
Yeah, he has no idea what he hosts then.
Uh, no, we had a gentleman by the name Steve Ray who had contacted me a few times, he was working with the former owner, um, to try and get him to pay off his back tax just to repurchase. The last time I heard from CJ was probably the end of September, beginning of October. So it's been over a month. Um, I told him what the amount was at that time and what needed to happen, I have not gotten anything, not even a phone call now, so.
What is the amount that you gave him?
The amount I gave him, going off the top of my head, was around thirty-three or thirty-five thousand.
Oh, with the waiver.
It, no, not the waiver, the fees are now in there because there were waived one time and nothing happened, so.
Okay.
That includes the penalties.
Okay, so, so that's something beyond that, assuming the man on the phone is actually.
And, and like I told you, like I told you the other day, Jason, I, I think that he's aware of that to the point where he's had that conversation with at least Steve, or because Steve, or I said the other day that Steve has wrote the, the, the fifty thousand dollar figure, you know, let's just say that, and he said hypothetically, you know, we say, we're gonna give you two hundred thousand dollars for this, there's fifty thousand dollars in back taxes. So we give you a hundred and fifty, we give a check to fifty thousand dollars to the town and we take ownership of it. That was the day, and I mean, that was in May, I believe. And he was trying to climb out the window and I said, let me give you a hand, so I pulled him back out of the window, he's like, I don't think that's a hand he was looking for, but that's. I'm like, what are you doing? So he said, well, look at this building, I said, no, you're not. So we had a very nice conversation and I mean, he asked a lot of questions, a lot of similar questions that you've been asked about roof structures and, you know, the, uh, historic district area and the allowed amount of roofs and he's kind of like looking around, he's looking at the roof there, there's a roof there. Um, what does it all mean? And he's calculating uh, dollar figures in his head, it would take fifty thousand dollars for this roof, it'd take, you know, twenty-five thousand for this, or up to seventy-five, blah, 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 and he's, you know, really, he kind of looked in the windows, there's a ceiling drop and and has relayed some of the stuff to your group as well, well, I don't think he did, I think Mike did.
Oh, well, I've spoken to both of them.
Okay.
Yeah, at their, they requested that we, that I talk to both of them for those types of questions.
Yeah.
And that's led into the requests for a walk for Chris, so.
Yeah.
If you think that's what you want, address it in town office.
And that, so that's the only letter from the town that he's got, previous owner.
Will you sell it there?
I was aware of when I was there, yeah. And exactly, because obviously we build twice a year, so it, you know, we can't count like this, this, I was always told that the second half is actually the first half of the taxes, but, um, how, how exactly how far behind are we in this scene behind the taxes?
This was like.
Well, he's done.
Yeah.
He's done.
We've all been for the left.
Okay.
So this year's taxes.
September nineteenth, twenty-two. There's no gray area because of that letter or anything else.
There's, these three years behind.
A question from a strategy standpoint. So are you folks looking to kind of like just wait to see what's gonna happen with these two gents or somebody else? Or at the same time, are you gonna look at the other options where somebody might wanna come into town and sell it to them? And what the town might owe or he might get, or any of those. Because each of those options, Susan said, it's kind of leaving the limb pack. And I think before you guys go too far down the road, you need to understand kind of like option A, B, and C. And have town council respond to it. And I would be a firm believer of not just giving an open-ended question to town council. I would like to basically say, here's three things, here's four or five questions we have in each of those things, can you respond to those? And I think with Susan's background, she's, she could frame up those kinds of questions. So it's not one of these open-ended legal discussions where we pay by the hour forever while he's doing research. He's doing a specific response to a request. Um, and with Susan's background in the preservation historic stuff, um, she might be in a position to be able to have that twenty-minute conversation with him and say, these are the questions we're looking to answer, we need these answers before the town can make a decision how it really wants to move, because you might just decide there's an option that just isn't gonna be worth looking at when you get the answers from him. Um, I'm just suggesting.
If for me, I think you know what my opinion is, unless, but the direction I wanna go in is based on the, this, the overall opinion of the town body, the voters of the town. So I would like to pose the question at town meeting, do we wanna do this, is this, is there any validity to this idea, to this plan, and do we wanna go in that direction? If they don't support that, then we.
That leads to the other two, huh?
Exactly, I see.
Yeah, like retained for town for disparate purposes.
All right, I'd like clarity, because you told us at one meeting at the legislature changed the law that no matter how old it is, we only keep what is owed to us.
Yes, yes.
I mean, the three years is out the window, I mean, we can sell it tomorrow and we're still only gonna get thirty-seven, thirty-seven thousand.
Exactly, yeah, right.
So I mean, there's no advantage to auction it because we're only gonna get X amount of dollars.
Right, you're only gonna get what is owed to the town. That includes, you know, like legal expenses and trying to deal with this. Uh, you know, any costs to the town, interest that he owes, all the back taxes he owes, the fifteen percent.
But by doing it.
But that's it.
Yeah, but by doing it that way, we could somewhat doctorate so that there was like promises and an agreement made for, to meet the overall set of the save and the preservation of the buildings and it would get it back on the tax rolls. As opposed to just.
Yeah, like you should sort of ask for proposals from potential buyers and sort them out and, you know, it doesn't have to be the highest, you know, this is the most money we could get, because you're not gonna keep.
Right.
You're not gonna keep it. Um, so you kind of you kind of have more to play with and what would be the best thing for the town, uh, you know, to sort of save the, you know, historic, uh, aspect of that building. Somebody that could actually do something with it that makes it, whether it's a, you know, they have deep, deep pockets and they want it as a private residence.
And get more money than brains.
Uh, you know, or somebody that wants to do something a little more commercial with it.
You get a hint of their, what's their capacity, but, you know, their process, are they, are they able to go through the community projects?
Yeah.
But without selling it to them first, the proposal's giving a chance to see what the likelihoods are.
Right.
And even somewhat measure the, the benefits to town, which.
Right.
It's like tact base, community impact, all these other things.
Right.
In a way that's kind of fairly measurable.
So you're only gonna write up the questions?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that. Yeah, I know Matt, I've known Matt for a long time, so.
And Matt most likely would be charging us.
Oh, yeah.
So with that, it's documentation for additional expense down the road.
Yes, yes, exactly, right.
A legal event, and do you have a list of all the contact people that you, that had contacted you?
I have the two.
Two, well, you, you are keeping a list, right?
I have a list. Well, small list right now, the two that gave me their affirmation with this.
Well, you have the out holder right side.
Yeah, I could, um, like a couple of questions under each of those three.
Correct.
Things, yeah.
Okay.
Um.
We start off with that, and you have copy of this letter.
Um, I've seen it, I don't know if I can put my hands on it right now, but I think, yeah.
No, make one.
Yes. Yeah.
You agree with that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Go there, that route, um, what's the time period, I mean, what are you looking for time period, are you? I guess I'm looking from Chris's standpoint.
On town meetings and hours.
Yeah, so we want, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do anything.
I think moves, yeah, move it now.
No, yeah, move, move now, get the answers. Cause I mean, if we get the answers, we may not, you know, we may not get the answer that I certainly don't wanna hear and it may not even be an option, you know.
Okay.
To, to take it before the, the taxpayer, you know, so it doesn't provoke, but we, I mean, it can't be before town meetings, it can't be before the Warren, it has to be.
Right.
Right. So. The answers. I agree with that.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I should, in the next couple of days, get the questions written out. Um, do you want me to send that to Matt? Contact Matt? I'm happy to do that.
I'm okay with that, so, yeah.
And just let him know that you guys.
I think that'll.
Have you to do that?
Yes.
Yes, definitely, yeah, yeah.
And basically won't give you approval of it.
Yeah, and, and, um, asking for written response so that everybody has the same information.
I agree.
Yeah, sure, yeah, does that sound good?
Yes, perfect, great, so I appreciate it, huh?
Yeah.
Should we wait on the, yeah, we should wait, we should wait, on the inquiries about entering the building?
Well, it's messaging right now, we can bring that, messaging on that issue is critical for anybody that might be interested.
Yeah.
We're, we're currently reached out to legal counsel, we're getting clarification, we expect it might take, remember two or three weeks, four weeks. Um, so we're not gonna be able to give you any more information until then and you could actually, if you have that many inquiries, you could set up a Saturday walkthrough.
Yeah.
Or, you know, if you're interested in it, we're doing a walkthrough on this date and we can do a few dates.
We'll start right off, skill three holder and go from there. It might drop off my inquiries right away.
But never mind. Yeah.
Start off and yell.
Uh, yeah, you know, I think, I think if we, say we sort this out and we decide, okay, to uh, retaining it, doesn't look feasible, um, former owner is not coming forward. Um. Think about the RFP one. I, I think what you may need to do is get some, um, like a real estate broker or a historic preservationist that would just look at it and give you an idea of here's what I think is feasible. So that if you put out an RFP, you're not asking for something that already isn't gonna be feasible. And, you know, there might be a minor cost of that that should be then added on to.
Right.
Whatever.
And there are people in this area that specialize in that type of thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I know Ken Perry's real estate agent.
He's the first one who comes to mind.
Would the, uh, would Bane Williams?
She might, um.
Because of her background, doing these science reports, we may go to that one for free because she really loves what she get for us with the cell phone report.
And then there's another guy, um, Steve Bedard, who does a lot of that kind of stuff, he's the more of a, it's more of a Jason kind of guy, he's more of a construction kind of guy, but he does a lot of consulting with like Strawberry Bank and, you know, places like that, um.
And get three estimates maybe and just that.
Yeah, I think, I think through, in real estate, if someone's got one thing in real estate.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Give you context for, if you accept an RFP, it's in line with market value.
Yeah.
By someone who knows.
Yeah.
And the, which some of that kind of plays into in any future talks with people that you're working with, they might be talking about assessments. And you know, they may have questions about going forward as they invest money in it, are things able to be worked out, so you've got.
Going forward as they invest money in it, are things able to be worked out? So you've got, you've got a little bit more data from.
Yeah, it's more of a market.
Market analysis.
The market gonna hold for this.
So one more question, there's a lot of personal belongings that previous owner in here, trilts, cars, no reveals.
Good.
How that, are we in?
That's a good question for the.
Yeah.
The overall subject being his access to buildings.
Does he have access to?
Well, he's never been rolled one way or the other, right? See, we don't change long, uh, we didn't shut up the electricity. That we know he's not been back, but. There are a lot of things there.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, let's say we do go forward, one of these options we got to.
Well, I mean, at this point, you're you're the owner. You're the owner of all of that, uh, of that building, all that property.
And personal.
And somebody else has their personal belongings there. How do you want to deal with that? Hey, you, get your stuff out of here.
I want the landscape trailer.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Right, but how do we notify? How do we do? Should we notify him there? Yeah, await till we get the answer.
I think you ought to ask Primax, how to.
Yeah, because I mean, where's the liability of him coming back and saying, okay, they they're not gonna break or anything with me and. I certainly don't want to give the impression that he was this type of person would ever do that sort of thing, but.
Yeah.
Just should be supervised.
I mean, if it's not his, if he decides to strike off and go get his stuff and God forbid he got hurt or something went through one of those holes in the floor.
Right, I mean, I think you need to think about it as your own, you own the building. Somebody else has been living there, they're out now, they left their stuff, what, how do you want to handle that?
So if we do, let's say, for him to come and get his personal belongings, but he says, well, I want to pay our taxes off, so how to.
Yeah, well.
That shoe can drop at any point, right?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, he's got a right of redemption.
So would you send him a letter?
And it has to be scheduled to, if he agrees to come get his personal, excuse me, get his personal belongings. It's gotta be, it's gotta be scheduled so that, you know.
Yeah.
Police department can be there and that sort of thing, but I agree with Susan, and I think that would be a question for Primax, so certainly. Maybe Matt, Matt, while we're.
Yeah, I could add that to my list.
I can the question.
I have it written down.
And you'll talk to Matt.
Yeah. Yeah. The other thing, um, New Hampshire Preservation Alliance, they're doing, they do this everything. Um, they have offered to come here to do like conversation with you guys. Or, uh, historic district commissioner, all of us. Or, uh, people who live in the historic district or anybody in town. I mean, they're willing to come and talk about. Uh, you know. What we're going through, how you deal with this, what are some good options, um. Whatever, like if if the RFP approach is the best approach, they could come and talk about it. They did, um, I was talking to the executive director. Uh, they helped, uh, Orford with, um, they had a similar. Uh, tax-deed property and I guess when you're driving down Route ten there along the Connecticut River, it's. Up on this ridge and all those big, and and they just really wanted that. Um, you know, that that look of it to be preserved, the town did, so. Uh, the Preservation Alliance helped them, uh, with that, and they ended up doing a preservation easement. On the building and then selling the building, or, yeah, getting RFP out and things like that, so. They've had experience helping towns deal with those kind of building issues. And they're willing to come and. Do educational or facilitate conversations or whatever.
So the town can do a pres- preservation easement on this building?
Could, yes. Mm-hmm. And that.
Uh.
That's a perpetual, forever. Sort of promise that whoever owns it is going to maintain the historic integrity of the building.
I I think I would like to have like a, like a public meeting.
Yeah.
To invite y'all come and have them come.
Yeah.
Um, whether it's here or at the library or, you know.
Yeah.
Someone like that.
Yep.
Not just for this property, but any future properties, particularly maybe in even in that neighborhood that. You know, I mean, none of us getting any younger, so if they have ideas and conversations about easements and how that works, maybe there's a. There's an owner of one of those adjacent properties now that says, who wants to do that?
Yeah.
Maybe that's how I want to perpetually see that this property is maintained throughout the next generations, you know.
Um. Yeah, I mean, it's, there's some expense to, you know, putting in. Easement on a building like that, especially if the town is the owner. Um, you know, you 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 need a sort of an assessment of what shape this building in now. What characteristics, historic characteristics do we want?
Uh, preserved.
Preserved, and, you know, there's a legal expense with that, there's some, the assessment. Then you pay a stewardship fee to, like NHPA would probably hold. The easement, so they would have to check every once in a while. Um, you know, is this, are all these promises being, uh, lived up to? So there's some expense in that, so you pay a stewardship fee, so it's not. Like, yeah, sure, we'll do that, you know, there is some cost to it, but what you get for it is. Probably an owner, a future owner that is passionate about historic preservation and. You know, you just kind of filter out who's gonna, who's gonna end up owning it.
Right, and maybe weed out some of the things like in this situation, that's had so many. Owners and every single person had a different idea.
Yeah.
It's been cut up and torn apart.
Right, right.
So the expense probably come out of the sale of the building, do this, this station.
Yeah, it could, yeah.
Or you could set up a fund, like a perpetual care fund, just.
I think, but, uh, she told me that Orford did, um. Uh, there was a guy in the, you know, this, I think it was Orford or sometime. Um, in this sort of historic neighborhood, who just went door to door and said. Hey, if you chip in for the stewardship fee, um, you know, this is, this building will. And that's how they raised the money to pay the stewardship fee, just collecting it from the neighbors who wanted their neighborhood to. You know. Yeah.
Chuck, didn't we listen to that?
I've actually haven't done much homework.
And, uh, come home.
Yeah, doing what Susan described as a fund available to do these kinds of annual events. Looking at different options, how that can be set up. So there's, there's a foundation capability to set it up, there's an heritage camp. Committee that or or commission that could be done to to do that, there's different options to be able to do that. And we actually, the reason I'm looking at it is I actually have a foundation that came to me and said, what are you guys doing for this? And I said, we. Talk about it down the road, they said, you need to think about it now because we fund that kind of.
Hmm.
So there's potential seed money to put into an account to be able to utilize for this town itself too.
And what price are we looking at as far as keeping this? Everything on it was five years or whatever couple of years they come and look at the building, make sure we're keeping compliance.
Yeah, I I think it depends on the nonprofit or the.
It's upfront, right? You're not.
Yeah, you pay that, you pay that stewardship fee.
Cause they're.
Right away.
Holder is committing to perpetual.
Okay.
Yeah.
Checking, which kind of mean if somebody wants to do something, they have to, oh, check with the holder, the holder comes out. So it's another kind of fee, but then. Yeah, forever, so.
It's not a fee you would pay every time they come and look, it's something you just.
We could possibly, even if we went that route, make that part of the RFP and like much like when you do a site walk for like a road. Say, these are the things that we want, this is the end result. We could possibly do the same thing where these are the end results, we are going to be requiring you to set up an easement for perpetual care. Through some sort of heritage foundation or something like that.
The reason I was looking at it, so what what Jason and Susan described of the upfront piece. Is part of our L chip grants, they already take a chunk of our L chip.
Yeah, right.
And that goes to that purpose.
Right.
But what I was checking into is. Particularly with the town hall, there is a requirement for us to maintain it to a standard, that's what that easement was we did earlier in the year. They will require periodically to come out and verify that that's been done and they charge for that. It might be a few hundred bucks, five hundred bucks, might be a thousand, might be fifteen hundred, they might retain somebody to come out and do it. So there could be a cost every year or two or three, a thousand, two thousand dollars for that kind of thing. That's where I was looking to come up with this fund, that would be there for that kind of a purpose. It could be leveraged beyond just the town hall project, it could be other things in town. If that fund is properly set up with the right criteria to it, you could leverage it beyond just the town hall. But we've got, we've got somebody that's willing to seed it.
Okay, good.
Probably roll into the heritage commission too. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's an option.
Yeah.
Um. Heritage commissions are like conservation commissions, they can hold funds like the conservation fund. This would be a heritage fund. Um.
I mean, I know we talked about it.
Yeah, yeah, right. Right. So, yeah, there are a lot of different little options and things we can do, but. Uh.
So going forward, I mean, they said we're just gonna have to wait till we have the answers from, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I think you need to know what.
Yes.
Yeah. What you have to do for each of these options and then. Yeah.
Set up, uh, our objectives going forward.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, uh, so we've got a couple of sample RFPs that the alliance forwarded, so I can send that.
Yeah.
To you guys, it's, they're two slightly different projects, one of them is the the town actually retained ownership, so it's a twenty-year lease in that case. Where someone agrees to, agreed to restore it, use it, and there's options at the end of the period. But that's, that's a little different, but the the setup of the RFPs is interesting where it it does some of these things about. Um, expectations and conditions beyond just a much money. And it it includes, but some of, you you're kind of selling the the possibilities of it. Mentioning things about the historic register might let someone take care of, take a federal tax.
Mm-hmm.
Credit for investment. You you put out what you think are the key points about property and the possibilities and. Frame what you'd like to get back, so you have somewhat equal things to look at, and I can send you those.
Okay, send it to Caitlin, so she can just come in there.
Yeah.
And what you show out of it.
Mm-hmm.
And Caitlin will respond on the walkthrough offer. Or walkthrough, walkthrough request.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let them know, um.
I would, yeah, and I would say, um, you know, thirty days, you know, everything's on hold for. Minimum thirty days while we contact council.
Yeah.
Start saying like two weeks, three weeks, thirty minutes, thirty days, and back to the. Meeting with the Preservator. Preservation Alliance.
Yeah.
Um, do you wanna, like, next year or sooner than later, sometime beginning of December?
Well, I think they would. Uh, they can come more than once.
Yeah.
Andrew would come and talk to to you.
I would like to wait until Andrew has a question.
Right.
So.
That could be a shorter date than a town, a wider event.
Um, you know, they could come and talk with you after responses from Matt. While trying to figure out the three options. That's one possibility, maybe.
So I think.
Um, but they're willing to, I mean, they're kind of dedicated to these seven. Seven buildings on the list, and so.
And for per years out, I mean.
Yeah.
The more opportunities to talk about it, the better for them and.
Yeah.
To get the word out there.
Yeah, and they're willing to come and be helpful, um, more than just once.
Three ABC options, there are some pieces that they would end up saying that they would help you.
Yeah.
Some of these RFPs are loaded with things that they brought to the town.
Yeah, right.
So it's not town resources.
And I I think I saw already a posting, a notice for, maybe it's at the part of the historical districts monthly meeting. There's a discussion about the.
Yeah, it's, uh, some. The the historic society meeting is a program on.
He's the program.
But that's, that's more.
That's still.
Yeah, we're trying to do more his, more older history than recent history and. Uh, but have it.
Do you want some of my stories for that night?
Chris had some formative experience in and around the tavern, but, uh, at some point in history.
Oh, boy.
It's always weird experiences.
Oh, yeah, so unfortunately, I'm old enough now, yeah, there is.
We might need a time capsule.
There, you might find, there may be a time capsule around there somewhere. Might be a mad doing twenty twenty.
Oh, boy. Right, yeah, sounds, I I I think, you know. Uh, I don't know how you handle the, uh, gossip around town, you know, at some point, people.
Facebook, that's how.
I don't do Facebook, that's drives me crazy. It's insane, Facebook. Anyway, but, you know, I mean, you could start talking, and so I I I think at some point we need a coordinated message about. Here's, there's factually, here is what we're doing.
Here's the objectives.
Yeah, it's what we're trying to work on, um.
I mean, that's, that's, we can do that after we have arranged.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Those objectives or principles can be fairly broad.
Yeah.
But so that things are being talked about and you you have the process.
And that's kind of, everybody agrees, and we don't exactly know what the final outcomes are gonna be, but. Here's how we're gonna work toward it, we're gonna try to listen to what people want and, you know. Find a solution that benefits the town. Yeah. Sounds good. Cool.
Good, so after you get all your stuff from Matt, we want to have another meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Favorite known, she can coordinate it.
Yeah.
You want to keep it simple, people you want to disturb of this street, board involved.
Um, well, we have a meeting Monday evening, so I'll probably talk about this a little bit, because, you know, I'm kind of. Going solo here. Um, yeah.
I mean, we do get their answers back and then set a meeting, I'm just wondering if you want to invite this so.
I think I would open it through whoever is interested and wants to.
Okay.
Wants to come, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That sounds good, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Keep it a little bit.
Historical society, anybody.
Yeah.
They want to come.
And preservation.
Preservation, yeah.
Yeah, good, yeah, I think Karen would be here, but.
Karen's away.
Away. Yeah, right. Yep.
Okay, while I'm here, can I just have the floor for a second? This morning here is better. We are, um, adding a name to the Veterans' Honor Roll at two o'clock on Saturday. That was, um, we've been notified by the family members and we've confirmed it through the DD two fourteen. They were an F N resident with the F N falls, uh, when they went in the United States Army to go to Korea. So at two o'clock, there'll be s- small Saturday, be a small ceremony.
At, um.
At the parade ground.
Right.
At the.
Yeah.
Oh, so.
Wow.
Just so you all know.
So this is a veteran of the Korean War.
Correct.
Right, interesting. Sounds good.
So I kind of like, we, are we gonna have enough time to get this? Can we get the nameplate made in time for the Veterans' Day and? Um, and then, you know, it's like, yes, we can, and yes, the council is gonna make it, I'm leaving here. When when I go on meetings, you'll pick up a block and then light bulb goes off in my head and I was talking to Cindy last night from the apartment. Uh, we don't own that property, we should probably let the owners of that property know, we have this thing. So I did that last night, so.
Uh.
I got some thumbs on that.
Sorry, good, perfect. Hope there's no.
Unrelated to this, just something quick, um, library. Basically, through a grant, had a random website developed with Live this week, it's for now. Um, I've been working with a web designer on some different things. Um, I've been working with a web designer on some different things. And I offered to be the contact to work with Teresa Slonik. To make sure the link off the town website is linked to the new. Uh, library website, and there's two old F and M NH links. That haven't been used in years, that I'm gonna, for the library, that I'm gonna make sure Teresa removes. So I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up that I'm working with her on making sure that works.
Okay, they go with the weather station.
Weather station came out nice.
Yeah, good.
And it's live and it's on the homepage and it is really cool when you. When you click onto that link and you scroll down, it's right, right there. And you can watch it, you can see the wind. Moving live right on the page, but cool.
So it's just scooping out, sure. Have there anything to happen?
I guess, and I'm not at liberty to make any public statements.
You still have, uh.
There'll be, there'll be a governor's announcement and new news media event.
So are you smiling or frowning?
He's always smiling. It's all smatted, okay.
It will be a news, I can't, I.